All right, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order and start off with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice I waited until you said.
Yes, I did.
I'll call the meeting to order.
On the way down, I realized that that's what was going to happen. Final strike back there.
And ask for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of salary list. On this, we had one question. We approved it last week at $850 flat rate. But we had one question for a person that was a halftime person that works under us. And that would be Rex Hurd. Trying to find him on here.
Veterans Affairs, just a third of the way down.
There we go. Which is 1706. And what we penciled in on this sheet is what his board recommended as an increase, correct?
Mm-hmm.
As an increase. So I believe all the numbers are in order here. Other than that, if you want to go ahead and approve a salary sheet.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the salary sheet as printed in front of us.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. If there were any discussion, I forgot that part. Come on. Extension of short-term land lease, Hardin County, Howard River Railroad. And this is where the trail, there's a lease for the salvage company that they have in place, and they did not, or they will not be off there before June 1st, and they're asking for a longer lease agreement. And that means it'll keep the maintenance up. And, what'd you say, $1,000?
Rental, I guess.
Rent. Rent. And the insurance. They have to keep the insurance, the $1,000, and the maintenance on that.
Second goes from June 1st to August 1st?
Yes.
Hopefully they've got it in.
I'll go ahead and make that motion then to accept the extension of the short-term land lease agreement as printed in front of us.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Agreement for detox community and family resources. Did you want to talk a little on that?
Just that it's a, for FY '15, so it'll be effective July 1st, and this is an agreement similar to the one we've had. Few minor changes because we're trying to get each county in our new region, even though it's substance abuse, it doesn't really fall under regional, but we're trying to use the same contract to make things more similar. So I would ask that you approve this agreement for FY '15 or detox with community and family resources.
It's very similar to what we've been doing. So it's, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for detox community and family resources.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Amendment, fiscal year 14 case management cost report.
We do a projected, and then a projected cost report, which our case management program gets paid on then throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, we do a, an actual cost report where we actually report what our costs were, and then those are reconciled. The way we had to track billable units changed as of the first of the current fiscal year. I did the best job I could on estimating those units, but I underestimated. We've actually been providing a lot more units than we had anticipated, which means if we would continue throughout the rest of this year, we're going to end up having to pay back a bunch of money to the state because we were overpaid. So I have, am proposing that we do this to send in a revised cost report, and then they will actually recalculate for this current year during the next two months so that we don't have to do that huge payback. So the units actually had been projected at 3,600, but I've increased that to 4,600 as an estimate of what we'll actually provide. So I need to have the board, you have to approve this, and then I send it in for them to look at, and then they have to approve it. So I would ask that you approve the cost report, amended cost report.
Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you want to copy that one, Justin?
Yes.
Oops. What did you do?
You don't need this one. That would help him.
Summarizes.
Yeah. Next, we have Central Iowa Community Services Amendment 208E agreement.
And I think the board will need to table that. If you remember, our region actually started under 208E last July 1st, but at that time, we couldn't get the state to tell us exactly what we needed to have in the 208E. So we did the best job we could, moved forward. Ron was appointed to that board representing Hardin County. They've been meeting now for almost a year, and just recently found out from DHS some of the things that we needed to change in that 208E. We have not gotten the final, you know, final original back to approve, so I think you should table it. But there's not a lot of significant changes, other than it was updated to include the counties that we, we've had counties at, join us since we started last July. It also required us to put more of our fiscal policies actually into our 208E agreement. There was also a change in the quorum for the board, because the 208E that was originally approved required a 75% attendance of the members in order to have a quorum, which, because we have 10 counties, that meant we had to have eight people there in order to conduct business. We've had at least one meeting where we were short, so we couldn't have a meeting. So they decided to change that to a majority of the members present for the quorum. There was also some question about future amendments to the 208E, if it needed to go back to each county, or if it would be done after the initial, if it would be done by the governing board. And that, there's still some discussion on that. But, so I guess I would just ask that you table it for now. Those are the main changes, and then when we get the good, clean copy, we'll get it to you for approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to table the Central Iowa Community Service amended 208E agreement until probably next week, but whenever we receive the copy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's tabled. Central Iowa Case Management 208E.
This is looking at forming a 28E entity to provide case management that would include Story, Franklin, and Hardin Counties. We each currently have done our own separate county case management, but as things have moved toward a regional basis in the mental health field, we've also been talking with case management providers about this. The three counties have been meeting for several months, and I, you know, I brought it up to the board a couple times, and Ron's been updated on it regularly because he's been on our, our Central Iowa Community Services Board. What we're looking at is 208E board, so one representative from each county would serve on a board. We would actually be doing business under Story County's provider number. It just made sense because they have the majority of the clients, that we do it under their provider number. So it'll be Story County doing business as Central Iowa Case Management. So all, we would be known as Central Iowa Case Management. We'll have a fiscal agent, which the Story County would be the fiscal agent. So each county would still continue to pay our ongoing expenses, salaries, and things like that out of our budget. And then each month, that budget summary would go to the director, and then that would need to be approved, and then the county would be reimbursed out of that. So we should get our actual, whatever we show on our summary at the end of the month that we've spent, will be reimbursed by that account. Employees would still remain, the record of, employment record would be with the county that they're currently working for. Administration and supervision, there would be a director, which I think will be me. I will probably be the director for, for this new entity. We have two current case management supervisors. We don't use a supervisor in our county. I've always done every, the supervision here, too. But we will be using the case management supervisor out of Franklin and Story to help cover all case managers. So they will have about 14 case managers, and we have some other clerical staff and so forth. We will have one cost report, which will need to be approved by the new board of directors. Case loads will look at utilizing our, one advantage I see to this is that we can utilize staff. Right now, we have some case managers that have to travel quite a distance, but if we have someone in that other area that's closer, we'll probably switch those cases around so that we can utilize their time and their travel time and stuff better. Another reason for this is Marshall County has had DHS as our case management provider, and our region voted that we will no longer designate DHS as a provider, only the county agencies. So that leaves case management in Marshall County open so that we can take the new referrals. DHS doesn't have to give up the cases they have right now, but any new referrals that come, it'll open it up so we can serve those people. And we've already got a case manager that works about a third of her time in Marshall County anyway, with Marshall County cases, so we see that as a big advantage, that we can, you know, increase our base down there, too. And then we'll have a regional advisory board, and that will be created by two representatives from each county that will be appointed by the new board of directors. Some advantages or benefits I see is with the transition to integrated health homes, which means we're losing, like in Hardin County, we're losing about 12 or 13 of our cases to integrated health homes, which is kind of tied in with the new national healthcare stuff. It makes it easier for us to maybe have somebody who loses several cases to pick up some cases in another area of this new region, rather than have a, have a too low a caseload. It'll be more efficiencies administratively. We'll have one director, one cost report, one set of policies, one entity doing the billing. Number of accreditations, like right now, each county has to, every three years, we go through a, a several day-long survey by the state. They come in, go through all of our cases, and then we get it, then they rate us and give us another, usually we've always gotten a three-year accreditation, but we'll just go to one of those now, so, since we're all a part of one agency. More flexibility using staff with expertise in certain areas. We might have somebody that knows a lot about CSN or, or other things that can provide knowledge for the whole region. And then also about the expansion into Marshall County. So those are things I see as benefits. I think Story and Franklin have approved this, so I would ask that, that this board approve the 208E and a representative on that board so that we can move forward and try to get everything set up to be effective July 1st.
Randy, you got a question? Randy, have you, have you seen these at all?
I have not seen the actual agreement. I, I do have a question, Len, in regard to it, and it's basically a personnel question. I know at the beginning, you said that the, that the employee, employment records would remain with the, with the county. How about in regard to, I mean, if it ever came down to hiring or termination decision, where would that lie? Would that lie with the county, or would it lie with the, with the new board?
Well, it would lie with the county of employment, but the understanding is there would be, you know, it would be a, a discussion between the, the board and the director with the recommendation to the county of employment. Because most everything's going to be reimbursed from the regional fund anyway, there shouldn't be any net cost to the county for those people. But, you know, the director will be supervising the staff and doing the ballots and stuff like that. But when it comes right down to it, it's, you know, it would have to be a change of status of the employing county of record in order to fire somebody or hire somebody new.
Okay. So it's, basically, you still have your employer-employee relationship between the county and the worker, but the director, who you believe will be yourself, is going to be doing the supervision over these people? Okay.
And that's similar to the way our, our Central Iowa Community Service region is. I mean, all the people are still employees of their counties. And down the road, that might change, but right now, it's, that's the way it is.
That was the main question I had compared to what was discussed.
And if you want a copy, I think the Story County attorney was involved in, because she actually helped write the original Central Iowa Community Services one. Here's a copy if you want to, you can look through it, but I think it's been checked over for legal stuff.
Is this someone we want to approve with? Randy's. Someone we want to table? Someone we're going to skip for a little bit, come back to?
Yeah.
Skip for a little bit, come back to?
Yeah. I think I ought to be able to get to it during the meeting.
I'm going to hold off on that one for a little bit and move to the approval of Blue Cross Blue Shield annual renewal. Which is basically saying we're going back to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll make a motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield annual renewal.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Which is this sheet we have in front of us. And what we did was an 8% increase of last year's. Correct? Correct. Correct.
So number 13, set health insurance premiums. That one, we want to set at 8%.
Which is the numbers printed.
Follow along here. I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have set non-union employees' insurance rates for 2014-15.
On that one, then, we'd be changing it over last year's plan. And to get the wording right, on our Blue Advantage Plan, it would be 6% of health insurance premiums, and on the Alliance Select Plan, difference, if you guys want to hear that.
It's not bad, is it?
No, the only time that I don't mute this, it goes off. That's crazy. All right. Sorry about that. On the second one, then, Alliance Select Plan, the difference between Alliance Select Plan and Blue Advantage Plan premiums plus 6%.
Of the Blue Advantage. Can I interject? I told Lance I was going to try to reword that so that it was not open to interpretation because you can read it a couple different ways, and I didn't get that done because we've been incredibly busy at the office. My suggestion is that you call the Blue Advantage Plan your base plan, and then when you refer to the Alliance Select package, you say the cost above the base. You're responsible for that, that cost above the base, plus the 6% of the total premium. Well, yeah, of the base. You're paying 6% of your base, the same as the other people, plus you're paying that additional cost of the premium above the base. Because just reading the way that it says, the way it's printed right now, I, I think I reasonably can see it construed at least two different ways, if not three. And that's why I kind of, before you approve it, I'd like to be able to have you solidify what you're saying so that no employee can take it somewhere and say, "Well, yeah, actually it does work the way you say it works," even though that's not what your intent was.
Eight times 1.06 plus parent B minus A.
Parent B, exactly.
Employee rate.
I just think, since ideally you're saying the base is the Blue Advantage, let's just call that base, like, refer to it in parentheses as base, so that when you get to the Alliance Select Plan, you're saying you're responsible for 6% of the base, plus the premium above and beyond the base cost in full. Meaning, like, you're not just going to pay 6% of that additional premium, you're going to pay for that whole additional premium, but you're also paying for your 6% of the base, the same as everybody else.
Right.
Okay.
Which is the same thing we did with the Sheriff's Union as well.
Yeah. I just don't, like I said, I just don't like the wording on the paper I saw because I think that it's open to interpretation.
Do you want to change the name of Alliance Select Plan, or are you going to leave that?
I don't, I'm not changing the name of the Blue Advantage either. I'm just putting a parentheses behind it that says base.
Blue Advantage, which is base.
Or A. I don't care.
Was that you that was calling me? So we could change that?
Yes. I tried to interrupt you. That was by design.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. It, it sounds more complicated than it really is, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is get it into a motion that, or I'm trying to get into a motion that, like you said, makes sense to everyone.
Here's an example. When you read it, if you just read it structurally how it's written, it sounds like you're going to pay for, you're going to pay for the amount of the difference, plus you're going to pay 6% on, it could be construed as 6% on the difference, or 6% on the whole thing, which you're already paying the additional premium on anyway. Why would you have to pay 6% of that again? You've already paid it. So I just, that's why I'm saying, I don't like the way it's written. Please simplify it before you make your motion.
So to try and simplify it a little bit, I think we could say, our base plan, which is a Blue Advantage Plan, there will be a 6% increase on, on that plan.
You'd be paying 6%.
You're responsible as an employee to pay 6%.
Right. 6% of the health insurance premium. And then on the next step up, you're going to be 6% of the base, plus the full premium of the Alliance Plan.
Above the base.
Above the base.
Not above the base, plus the 6%, plus the, all that crazy stuff. Yes.
Get that, Nancy?
Is that sound right?
6% of base plus full, full premium above the base?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. Stamp of approval.
I'm going to shut up and stop right there.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think it's a good, a good plan since Lance and I got here, and now with Ron, you know, I think we're moving this in the right direction to give our employees choices, but yet to give them more ownership of their insurance plan. I think that's what, I think it's good for them and good for the citizens of Hardin County. I think the more ownership you have of a plan, the more you're looking into trying to save costs, too, when you're using the plan. So I like where we're headed.
I, I just want to say, I calculated some of the numbers that you had, and I thought it's entirely doable. And even if I wasn't at the salary I was now, if I was back at my earlier position salary, I would think that it's doable. So I appreciate the, not making a huge hike, you know, but making a step in the right direction. So I thank you for that. And I just, I want to clarify, too, the, the 10, 25, and 50 fee that we pay now, that is just gone. We're going strictly with the 6% or the 6% plus the, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, ready for us? Yeah, Randy?
Yeah. I did have the opportunity to review the 208E agreement. But the only thing I would add in regard to that, in regard to notifying the board, now, and I want to basically state, there's absolutely nothing wrong with this provision. It just kind of hit me that there could be another way to go about. I doubt probably in this agreement, especially if it's already been approved, I just want you to know about it. It has to do with the insurance and the liability. There's a particular provision in the agreement. It's a paragraph number seven. And first off, obtaining insurance is probably going to take care of any circumstance. But I just wanted to let you know that in the event you ever got beyond the caps of insurance, that basically the liability is going to be divided equally amongst the counties. It isn't going to go by population, or isn't going to go by number of cases, or anything of that nature. It's just going to be, if there's three counties, it's one-third, one-third, one-third. And that's the only thing I wanted to bring to your attention. Going to stress again before that, there's a provision that there would be insurance coverage provided. Liability is initially at the 208E organizational level. Okay? So it's with that board of directors, and they would obtain the insurance. That's going to be a cost to the counties, but it's only if things went above any liability coverage on the insurance. Everything else, basically, as Lynn outlined in regard to his presentation on the agreement. And basically with that said, I would have no opposition to the approval of this 208E agreement.
Well, I'll leave that open for a motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept this 208E agreement for Central Iowa Case Management and appoint Ron as our board representative.
I'll go ahead and second that. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Randy for his input on that. Does anybody want to follow up on any input questions? Hearing no more discussion? All in favor?
We have a roll call, please, since it's 208E.
No. Roll call.
Brian.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, next we go to flexible spending account planning documents.
Nothing's changed here, has it? But I know that.
No. No.
Yeah, that's what I talked about.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 flexible spending account planning documents.
You're approving both?
Both? You want me to do both?
Well, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I can do both. I'll do both. Administrative agreement and debit card addendum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Because basically it allows you to take money out of your paycheck and put it into the, an account. You can use it as a debit when you go to pay for your health insurance reasons. And at the end of the year, is this a use it or lose it?
Yes.
It's a use it or lose it?
At the end of the year, they have until March to file their last one. So, I mean, they can find bills that they didn't submit throughout the year and get it reimbursed. A lot of people usually can find a way to be reimbursed for it.
Okay. And the debit cards, where you can take it about anywhere, some pharmaceuticals and things like that, that normally you wouldn't use?
I use the debit card. I've used it for three years, and it's so much simplified compared to filing paper reports because...
to filing paper reports, because if you go to your doctor's office, or you go to the pharmacy, whatever, instead of paying your $10 copay, writing a check, or whatever, you just give them the debit card and it's done. And then, Blue Cross, behind the scenes, hooks it up with your, your explanation of benefits, to show that you actually received service that day, and then you paid your copay and it corresponds, and you don't have to file anything additional. If you let it bill to where you didn't pay for copays, and then you paid 40 bucks on it at once, then yes, you do have to supply something that shows the four dates that you're paying for were actually eligible, that type of thing. But ordinarily, if you just use it every single time, it, behind the scenes, they match it up, and there's, there's no like work. So, pretty fancy.
It is pretty fancy.
Yeah.
I don't use it.
Well, and the other nice thing, when I went to the debit card, I'll just do a plug for this, because a lot of people probably don't even think about it, but I, I use the debit card to do, to buy my glasses, you know, when I go to the, the vision clinic, whatever, and I want to buy my sunglasses that are prescription, or my reading glasses, or anything like that, you're talking $200, $300 right out of your pocket. So, you write out the check, on the old method, then you submit it, and then you wait like two weeks for your reimbursement check to come back, well, you're fronting that money, and it's, I mean, I don't know about your checkbook, but that hurts. And so, with the debit card, you just give them the debit card, and it's paid for, and you don't have to front the money, it's already preloaded on your debit card for the entire year, the amount that you specified, and it's, it's all there. So, from day one, if you said, for the whole year, I'm going to spend $1,500 on Flex, on day one, $1,500 is available to you on your debit card.
What happens if you leave early?
Then that's between you and your employer.
They never used it in the early days, did they?
On, on health, it is, on the daycare reimbursement, it is not. Like, daycare reimbursement, you can use a debit card for that, but you can only use it as the money is available in your account for that specific purpose. On healthcare, it's loaded for the year, and it's because it's a contract between you and your employer, and so, if you leave early, yes, your employer has already deposited the money into the account, it's already been withdrawn from our pool to, to fund all of these. And so, yeah, you can take a hit on it if people use it all, but that, like I said, that's between the employer and the employee, that's not anything to do with Walmart. And I, I understand how come that happened, because in a previous employment where I had that, I left early, I called and asked how much I had left on the card, and they are on, in my account, and they explained to me how much I would have deposited to the date that I left, and then that's how much I personally spent for the year, I didn't go above and beyond that, even though Walmart told me, it's already there, you have every right to use it, even though you know it was never deducted from your paycheck. I've said too much, but I just want you to know that.
You do cap it, and I don't know where that's not being involved with it anymore, but you do cap it so that the county's risk isn't so high.
Right.
In, in the renewal dollars, so that you don't take-
They need somebody to-
I know you didn't do one of those.
Okay.
Right.
But I was told that the people that don't use it all up, that really offsets-
I would say, yes.
-the situations, so that's why they don't worry too much about it.
Right.
Any more discussion?
Sorry?
My previous life, we had the Flex Plan, but we didn't have the debit card, and that's a pretty good deal for the employers.
Oh, yeah.
It's nice.
Is there going to be anything where they're going to come and talk to employees? Because I, I wasn't even aware of it, and I don't know what my staff are.
You can actually sign up to get your debit card anytime during the year, if you go to the website, the Walmart.com, whatever, you can, there's a link in there that you can request a debit card right in the middle of the year, and they'll send it to you. But usually, you, when you sign up for your Flex in November at Wellness, which is when supposedly the Walmart person is in attendance, that's when you mark down how much you want taken out in Flex and stuff. I've used it my whole entire working life, so I'm familiar with it, and I'm more than happy to explain it to people come November, if Walmart's not here, but that's not what I'm trained to do, you know, so, but I'm more than happy to talk to employees about it and let them know how good it is, but I won't touch the tax benefit side, because that's where I'm like, I don't give advice. So, I give advice.
I was going to say, wait a minute.
Financial advice.
Don't give advice.
Yeah, don't quote me on that. That's funny.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, utility permits, secondary roads.
We have one permit.
Go ahead, Ron.
Yep. I'll make motion to approve the utility permit application by Windstream Communications Inc. for the purpose of placing new telephone cable from 190th Street South, 2,250 feet, to address, to add, to address 19391 E Avenue in Sector 15, Buckeye Township.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. DOT budget amendment.
Give you guys a copy, Nancy. With the DOT budget, our department operates under the county budget, and then the DOT, we have a budget with them. With the DOT budget, there's four, four main areas of expenditure, where Jessica just cares about the total amount, is that correct? And that's in administration, engineering, construction, roadway maintenance, and then general roadway. We're within budget total, but we're over in two of the areas, and quite a bit under in one, and so, I have to do a DOT budget amendment, explaining why we're over in the two. But I guess we can just go through it real quick. The, on the revenue page, we did have, from property tax levies, it dropped by $139,101. That I had counted on the general, that money, but we couldn't do that, so, so that just reduced the revenues a little bit. We did get a little bit more money for the road use tax before, so, there's a little major differences there. Administration and Engineering, added employee Greg with his promotion, and that put him from outside in the road maintenance up into Administration, so that increased that. And then, I forgot to add half of my salary into one of them, I, I'm supposed to break my salary up into Administration and Engineering, I put it in one half when I did the budget, and I forgot to put it in the other half, so, so we do have an increase for Administration and Engineering, that's one of the areas that went up. The construction went down quite a bit. And then roadway maintenance, we were able to drop those numbers down. Been doing our own rock hauling is, is a big one, where we don't have to write that large check out. General roadway is really where we took a big hit, and we had drainage assessment, then the drainage repair bills, that, that was $115,000 over budget than what we expected, quite a bit in parts, and, you know, we had four motor grinders down at one day this winter. And we've got another motor grider down right now, we didn't think that the transmission was going to need to be replaced, but it does now. So, we're working on that.
What's that, for the count for the year?
Well, one of them-
For end.
-motor grider had two torsional dampeners, one went out in November, and the other one went in January, but we found out that was a possible flywheel problem with the bolt warping out. And I believe there was two other machines with torsional dampeners, then we had a blown engine, and then we had another one throw piston, if I can remember them all. So, we're quite high in parts. And we went over snow and ice control, but that was one of the categories that went down. That cost us a little more than, than one. So, overall, the total expenditures was, as Revy said, at 5.413 million, and, and I'm estimating at 5.04 million, so, staying within the total, the total budget for the department.
Do I hear a motion on the DOT budget amendment?
Does it accept, or approve it, approval? I'll make a motion that we approve the DOT budget amendment.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
One of the things there, real quick, I guess I'll say is, like, under the administration, because we moved Greg up, Greg and Terry salaries come out of that administration, but I think that, just one of the things we want to change, where, what we really should be doing with them is breaking that down, so, they're under the cost of, if it's snowing, it's snow removal, you know, and the, reading through the DOT recommendations, that's really what they want us to do, but hasn't been done in the past, it's just easier to put their salaries up in Administration and be good. But we really need to break them down, of where they're managing at, what they're doing. So, we'd like to, to do that in the future.
Any other discussion?
When Odell's been trying to find the $139,000, that he didn't get, any way that he can.
It does, it does, it just hurts the carryover, that's what it hurts.
Yeah.
And the carriers, it's going down, and, you know, we try to, to spend what we bring in, and, you know, now it looks like we're spending more than we bring in, but that's not how we planned it originally.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Other business?
I filed for reimbursement on the trail to the DOT. There's a couple hiccups in that, that I haven't made you aware of, but I keep forgetting to bring it up with you, they, I'm still working on it, they have a 5% that they're going to withhold from reimbursing us, which equals about $38,000, and they're going to hold that until the project is complete, and I sort of went back and forth with the person I was corresponding with by email about, well, is it complete or is it not? Was the project just to purchase it, or was the project to purchase it, do the engineering fees, do the bridge stabilization, you know, at what point is it actually considered finished and final to get that remainder $38,000 to us? And since I didn't write the grant, and I didn't write the original project, I was really unclear as to what made it final. The sheet that she emailed me then, in response to that, shows that we have a lot of work to be done before we're actually going to get our $38,000 back. So, just to let you know, that's where we're at. And then, I got an email right before I came down here from her again, that there was some clarification on a few things, that Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation had completed the reimbursement form for me and submitted it, and upon further examination at the state, they said they needed documentation on certain things, and they weren't able to reimburse us more than what we've actually spent out of pocket. So, they won't be giving us the money to do the engineering costs and the bridge stabilization and such, based upon the appraisal being more than the value, or the value of the land being more than what we paid for it, which is what they told us would probably happen. We actually have to spend the money for the engineering costs first in order to get that money back, so, that's part of the $38,000 they won't give us back right now. So, just to let you know, this is going to carry over into the next fiscal year, it will be ongoing. I don't think it's un, you know, undoable, I think this is fine, but I wanted to let you know there was a little, a few little hiccups in this, where they're working on getting back the money that we actually spent to purchase the land, to the tune of, I believe, $714,000. But from 714 up to 775, we're not close to getting that money yet until we start doing the bridge stabilization, the engineering work and that. And then, once we hit final on the completion of the project, then they'll release that remaining $38,000 on top of that. Just wanted to let you know.
Someone along the same line. I know here in the past couple weeks, I telephoned City Attorney for the City of Marshalltown, he had been sending some emails, one of which was in regard to the short-term lease agreement that he addressed today, but the other was in regard to where in the process would Hardin County be deed-ing the Marshall County portion of the trail to the City of Marshalltown.
I have that deed prepared, actually, and it's in my office, I was waiting for the quitclaim deed to be recorded, because originally, we had a warranty deed given to us, and we recorded that in both counties, and then it was advised that that was an error, that a quitclaim deed is in order for the railroad properties, because they don't do warranty deeds, and this is all above my knowledge. So, they did a quitclaim deed then, that needed to be re-recorded in both counties, that was completed last week, Nancy actually ran it to Marshall County for me and had it recorded there, and I have that. And then, I now have the deed to quitclaim in Marshall County, the portion that belongs to them. It just needs to be taken down there and basically executed and, and recorded.
Well, actually, that would go the other direction. It, let's put it this way, it's my understanding that all the property was deeded to Hardin County.
Yeah.
Okay, by the foundation, so, it'll need to be approved up here inside, and then ran down.
The quitclaim?
Yeah.
Okay, it's in my office, I'm, real estate's not my forte, but it's up there, ready for someone to do something with.
And with respect to that, I think we need to really go through the full-blown process in regard to a sale of county-owned property, which would be the two-meeting process, where first, you pass a resolution setting a public hearing with regard to the proposed transfer of the property, then you would have the public hearing, and after that hearing, you would have your vote on whether to approve the deed and authorize the chairman and the auditor to sign the same. So, you're going to have a little bit longer of a process with respect to that. So, when things are ready to go, then we-
I'll give you the deed that was sent to me then, and you can either re-prepare it, or you can hang on to it and look at it, and make sure it has everything that you want it to have, because it wasn't prepared here, it was-
Was it, again, by the attorney-
Yes.
-for the Heritage-
Yes.
-Foundation? Okay, what I'd want to do then is, I'd, I'd want to get a copy of that down to the City Attorney for Marshalltown, to make sure they're going to accept that.
Okay.
Then we'll go ahead and go through the process.
I'll, I'll get it after this meeting and walk it down to you.
Any other business?
There was a reference of one document, there was a reference of one document having to do with the trails, in regard to an escrow, an escrow payment, and I'm just going to bring this to the Board's attention, I don't know if they want to look into it any further. I, in fact, I think, no, it's not referred to in the, necessarily in regard to the lease, I'm not seeing, but I think I-
Lease extension, are you talking about?
Hold on.
And then that's towards the end.
It, it was in the original lease agreement, I don't know if it was in the extension.
$70,000?
Yes. Yeah. Does anybody know where those funds are at, is, is basically the question?
That's a good question.
As to, it's my understanding, it's my understanding that they were, this says they'll place 70,000- place $70,000 in David Wetch, Abbott and Osbourne, in Des Moines. And basically it's supposed to be being held until everything is removed, that salvage work is done, it's kind of like a incentive, a little bit of insurance. I just kind of wondered with regard to that as to whether that was still intact, I mean, since we have gone by, was that also referred to in the extension?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But, I mean, that, that was just one matter, I mean, that came up in conversation, I mean, again with the city attorney from down in Marshalltown.
That was in the extension that we approved today.
Okay.
Any more business? Hearing none, I'll ask for adjournment.
Uh, some of.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you everybody.